And it's been brought up to the EDA board and something that we're working on right now, so I'll just ask, if someone out in, a family member or somebody from outside the city of Tracy asked you, Jerry, what does Tracy have? outside the city of Tracy asked you, Jerry, what does Tracy have? What would you say?
A great hospital.
A great hospital. Hospital, no, that's exactly what I was looking for. What else we got? Tony, what else do we got?
Oh, some school systems that are second to none, recreational.
Second to none school system. But we have a K through 12 that is actually in Minnesota, which Minnesota is known for its education. It is second to none.
Yep.
So what else do we have here in town? Go ahead, Mayor.
We have hometown hospitality.
Okay. So now, can you picture any of that? You know, you're saying we got a good hospital, you're saying we've got a good K through 12, we've got great hospitality. How do you, how do you, how do you put that out there? If somebody really asked you, what would you have them do? Well, I know what you can have them do. Here in not too long, you're gonna be able to show them to a, possibly a YouTube video or something that's gonna be attached to the Tracy website and a couple Facebook where it'll, it'll show with some, with some aerial views from a drone, and it'll actually have, maybe it'll have some voiceover, whatever that's called, where it's just voiceovers from maybe the superintendent of schools explaining, you know, how, why the school out there, the K through 12 school is so good. And maybe a, from the, the best worker at the Sanford out there would come on there and say, this is why Sanford and Tracy is so good. Because those are the type of things that we need to show people to get them to move here to promote Tracy. So that's something that the EDA is working on right now with a company that we've already approved some of the things, and we're gonna maybe have some short videos in there, or it could be one four-minute-long video. We don't know how exactly it's going to look yet. But I'm gonna just give you an idea. It's, it's, go to, it's on YouTube. It's I Love Ortonville. Just go to that one right there, and that'll give you an idea of what the one that Tracy will have. I'm not gonna give you a date and when that's gonna be done, because I'd still like to see some Four Seasons, see some summer events, some winter, some spring, some fall, you know, with whether it's harvest or winter, ice skating, sporting events going on, you know, summer, Swift Lake, that type of thing. So, that's, that's what I wanted you to know that we're working on right now. Something that you won't have to think about, what does Tracy have to offer? You're gonna be able to push them towards a video, and they're gonna say, well, that's the place I'd like to be. Any questions? See, I didn't pick on any of them, did I?
Look out, Winston.
You did the last meeting.
Yeah.
Sounds like a good idea.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Jeff.
Me next. So I didn't get my report in for the packet. I do have a copy in front of you. Pretty much getting ready for winter. Obviously, we had one little snow the other morning, it was kind of borderline whether we wanted to deal with it or not, but kind of glad we did because it packed down really quick, so. Working on some hazardous building paperwork. Keep the ball rolling on that. Christmas decorations are up. We did some repairs on the vent next to the building here, and then the liquor store roof on that back stairway, that was leaking pretty bad. We did get that done. And then worked on the west side of the hangars. Put some asphalt millings, about six inches of millings in there, which is, it's a lot firmer there. We'd like to get it smoothed out a little bit more yet. There's some bigger chunks there, but some of that's gonna break down over the winter. Some of it, we're gonna have in a pile at the end, and we'll just pick it up, but then we're gonna kind of see how it, how it stays, and if we have to, we'll spray some road oil or something on it to keep it in place, so.
So that should take care of most of that problem?
We can drive a payload through it after the rain and hardly even make a track, so...
It definitely looks better.
Yeah.
Now, I noticed the one is driving by.
It looks like dirt, but it isn't.
But, but the hope is that that'll take care of the issue out there.
With the sinking and the mud.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
So, and they were able to move a snow on it. I mean, obviously, it's fresh, so some of the pieces came off.
Right.
There's a little bit of that, but we can deal with that going on there compared to what we had to work with before, so. I don't know if you had any questions on any of that. Other than that, I would like to remind people that if it looks like it's gonna snow or if it's snowing, just remember to try to keep your cars off the street. We had over 30 on that last, it wasn't really announced that we were going out, because we weren't sure how much we were gonna end up with, but we had over 30 cars in the road that we were going out of.
Are you gonna use that more when we're into winter? Where we, you know, people signed up, they would get a notification?
Yeah. If, if I get it out, usually he puts it on Nixle. It's on Nixle, Facebook. We try to get it on the radio, usually by 6 o'clock. Those are, and then we just have the scrolling message, but that doesn't really tell you when we're going. But those are your three main ones, the radio, Facebook, and Nixle, if you're looking for updates on that. So, sign up, talk to the police chief, Jason. He'll get you signed up with Nixle. If you don't have it, they'll text it to your phone.
I just don't want to hear from the public, they got a ticket, but they didn't get the notification that there was gonna be plowing done.
Yep. You have cell phone and internet, Facebook, and those are the quickest ways of getting it, other than...
If it looks like you got snow coming, park off the street.
Yep.
But we know that's not always...
And generally, if it's over two inches, plan on us being out. I mean, if it's right at the two-inch mark and it's really fluffy and it blows away when you drive over it, we're probably not gonna do much with it, other than spots, you know, unless it's becoming a problem. But that's kind of the guideline, if you want to go off, something to go off anyway, so nothing's really written on it, but...
They didn't ticket anybody in this last event, did they?
I didn't get the notice out. I kind of just woke up at midnight.
I think the furrow around the vehicle should have been a nice warning.
Yeah. Well, there wasn't really too much there, so it wasn't, but if you get anything over six inches, it's, it takes a little bit of doings to get around cars, and also then people have to dig their cars out, too, and that's not much fun either, so. Just all around better if we, because we don't usually come back and clean up where the car was parked, so. So you'll have that to deal with until the next storm, so. Other than that, that's all I have.
So I'll start with, both police had fire. Said they didn't have any updates. We're both just working on normal things. Neither one could be here tonight. For administration office here, we did some Banyon training. That Banyon is our software that we use for everything. And most of the staff had not had any, if, if any. I think only one staff member had any Banyon training, so it was time. So we all went through it. It was great. We got a lot accomplished. We learned a lot. We're able to definitely streamline some of the things we do and use our software more effectively. A lot of that's being instituted right now, so that's, it's taking some time, but they're doing a great job getting that in. I had a League of Minnesota Cities Regional Conference, talked a lot about council members and stuff like that, and how to help with things. Had a meeting with Bolig Engineering, talked about the library basement. They did some measuring up on that. Talked about some airport stuff and a potential new municipal building someday. Had a Tracy watershed management committee meeting that went fantastic. We got a lot of good things out of that. That was the initial one, that was the meeting with the hydrologist, and you actually appointed the board after that fact, so the next meeting is to be determined. Working that out right now. Department head meetings, we started having department head meetings the first Monday of the month at 1:00, just to get some of the stuff that isn't necessarily something we needed trouble with a meeting and things like that, just to try and share some continuity and disperse things throughout, so. That was something that used to be done in the city, and I had some requests to re-implement that, so we did, and it went well. Planning commission meeting, we, believe it or not, talked about sidewalks. City council meeting, EDA meetings.
Talked about sidewalks.
We had talked about sidewalks, too. Had a lot of stuff with EDA lately, and that Jeff's been doing a fantastic job. Jeff is officially a city employee as of today, no longer contracted, so congratulations, Charter commission meeting, Lyon County administrators, a bunch of us have been getting together, talking about common problems and stuff. It's nice because we're able to share a lot of information and not duplicate efforts. I'm working right now on a leave policy, and I'm getting some input from some of them. Some have policies already instituted, so it's nice to just rely on that and not pay our attorney to draft up every document that we need, where he can just review it quickly. Upcoming stuff, budget preparation, still working on that. The auditors were here today. Got a lot accomplished with them today. They were here for their preliminary audit. They're, we're gonna have some ongoing stuff going on. Their final audit review will be in April. They're gonna have some, some assignments for us for that. Flood, it's really at a standstill, and it is for everybody right now, as far as the VIMA portion of it. They were waiting for our case managers to be assigned and things like that. There's just too many disasters going on right now, and they're responding to them, you know, on the levels that they can. We, I'm constantly updating and adding stuff to it and kind of working that document, trying to keep it live and refreshed, so we should see something in the next 30 to 60 days on that. Tomorrow, we have GASB training, both myself, myself and both the finance clerks will be going to that. That's government accounting standard. Tracy active living and swift long-term recovery team meeting is the current up-and-coming ones that I have. Any questions?
Busy.
Okay, then we'll move on into the charter change recommendations due to the election results.
Rosemary, did you want to introduce this, or did you want me to just...
I can, if you made me to.
If you wanted to represent. Do you have a copy of it, or I can give it to you?
You can give it to me, it's on my phone. Thank you. You're welcome.
So what this is, is it was voted, both city questions were voted yes, so we need to update the charter to read what is yellowed out on here. Do you want me to read it? The city council shall be composed of a mayor and six council persons who are, who as qualified electors shall be elected at large. The mayor and each council person shall be elected for a term of four years and until his or her successor is elected and qualifies. In the event of a change to the composition of the city council, either by amendment or by, or other lawful means, the city council shall by resolution determine the procedure on how to implement any such changes to the council composition. No mayor or councilperson shall serve for more than 14 consecutive elected or appointed years. One calendar year hiatus shall be required after serving 14 years. The mayor and each councilperson shall serve a term of four years and/or until his or her successor is elected and qualifies. So that's the charter change.
So this was part of what was already written and adapted based on the questions and written by our city attorney, Mr. Gross. So it's...
This is how it's reflected now in the charter itself. This is the correct wording that we need for that.
So this has been, where it went, it went from the recommendation, the voters voted on it, the city attorney drafted it in a format how he saw fit legally. The charter has...
Met.
Has met and approved it.
Yes.
And now we're asking for the council to approve it. If the council approves it as written, it will then be recorded as such.
That would be our one-year-end thing that we will record.
There's no requirement for a public hearing or any, like any other ordinance change or...
It was.
It was before that.
It was before.
Just clarifying, so all you need is a motion or a second to approve it as written.
The charter is governed and written and changed by the council, so the fact that we're, even though it was done by vote, just for the formality of it and, you know, the final say, it needs to be by the council is to accept this wording.
There's no longer an ass, it's just a simple majority.
Correct. This wording solves some of the problems that led up to this situation in the first place.
Well, if you can handle it with just a simple motion and not a resolution, I'd make a motion to approve the charter changes.
Do we have a second?
One second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Motion carries. Advertise an open spot on the charter commission?
Do you need me to talk about that, or...
Yeah, you sure can.
Okay, well, have, we have a request for someone who is thinking about retiring from this commission. We have decided the best way to do it is to advertise an open spot, and then when that, try to get through our business and then do it all at one time, do the business in the corridor, everything all at once, because it's a court order to get somebody appointed again after they've resigned. So we're trying to keep it so we keep as much of the legal work down as we can. And this person has agreed to stay on until we can get to, through the rest of what we need to do in the next year, which is reviewing the charter.
So if somebody comes on the charter, they, it has to be legally done?
Yes. When this charter, okay, what happened was there were only two of us on the charter, which we could not operate, because our charter calls for nine. Okay, so then we limped along like that for a number of years. So finally, we got the city council to appoint enough people for the charter. That had to go to a district court to be appointed. We had somebody resign from that charter shortly after they came on, and then we had to have somebody else apply, be appointed, and that had to go again before district hearings, so to...
Do you want people that are like actually willing to put through the effort and not come on and come back off?
Right, right. But sometimes it becomes necessary for people to retire, whatever, so, but that, but this person has said that they will stay until we can kind of do it as cohesively as possible. We'll still be able to operate as a full quorum, you know, as much as we can, but...
Confuse how you advertise for a vacancy when there isn't one, then.
That's a good question.
It's a proposed vacancy.
Yeah.
He's asking for his position to be replaced, and he'll, he'll resign upon appointment of the other person.
Right.
And the reason why is because technically the charter can't meet...
Right.
If he just resigns, and we don't have that position built.
Right.
So he's doing it to keep the continuity of it, to continue operation.
And we do have two people coming off in 2019 as well. So we will, Tony, we will need to have some other people step up for that as well. So we're just trying to do this as...
And that will be the end of 2019.
19.
They'll serve through 2019.
So you got a year before you, yeah, I see what you're trying to do. I just...
So, any questions?
So, is it for a certain length of time? Is there a term?
Yes, there's terms.
What is the term?
We, we staggered them because we all came on at the same time, so we staggered them, so they're...
We've got a lot of people who has terms ending in 2021.
Right.
So it may, we'll have to look and see. It may be, maybe a two-year term, it may be...
Because aren't we gonna need to know that before we would advertise?
Yep.
Yes, yes. So, looking forward into the year of 2019, we have one that's requesting to come off, and two that will be coming off, so this is just kind of a heads-up, so we could...
Today, I think his term is 2020.
Yes.
So the seat would be filled until 2020.
Right.
So it'd just be basically one year or less.
Two years.
Does it be the end of the year?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there any other questions?
So you just need a motion that will advertise for the opening on the charter commission? I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
That being said, is there any applications laying back that, that have been looked at for charter?
None that I have.
None that are less than a year old.
All right. That was my only question.
Is there a timeframe that you'd like to set for it, for accepting applications, like a first review date? Would you like to do it at the second meeting in January or something, or... Just to give...
Until filled?
I would say for first review, though, so that you can, so that you have the ability to fill the position up. If you get four applications and you find a candidate that the council agrees on, you can fill it, instead of saying, you know...
Why don't we do it at the first one, that, I mean, it gives people a month.
Okay. Then we'll, we'll put it on all our...
And if there's nobody, then we just keep rolling, or... We can always extend, it's always, and it sounds like sooner the better type, too. Because if they want to get off, just for a reason. I mean, I know they'll stay for as long as, but it's...
Right.
If they want to go, it's like we might as well get them replaced.
Might be somebody sitting at home right now that's been waiting for this opportunity.
Yes, to be on the charter. Yes. Okay?
Thanks, Rosemary.
Thank you.
Do you want to take us into the RFP for the city attorney?
So, myself, Shane, and Jeff Carpenter opened the Tracy City RFPs. We did receive one. It was from our current legal provider, or our current city attorney, Matt Gross, from Quonstur Mendorring. I guess it's my recommendation that we hire him again. We did. The rate stayed the same, but we were able to add criminal prosecution to it. And the criminal prosecution on that, as you see on page five, is $100 per hour for criminal matters. So that's the only change that I see from the original contract that we had.
Well, I'd make a motion that we accept the RFP from Quonstur Mendorring for, that's for legal services for the year 2019.
I'll second it.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2018-65 canvassing the general election held on November 6, 2018.
Diane's the election expert. I'm gonna let her tell you about this.
So, the canvassing board met on the 14th and canvassed the results, which matched the results of election night. So this resolution is just the document that we need to have approved in order for us to send that information to the county auditor.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-65.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2018-66 ordering the raising of hazard this building at 157 Third Street.
So as you may recall, this is the old, as it's affectionately known, Henderson Building. There is some questions about the ownership of it. This is one of the names that has been brought up as, as far as a potential owner, and he needs to be notified with the same process that was given to First United Acceptance Company, as they claim him to be the owner, although legally he is not. Talking to city attorney Matt Gross, he recommended that we file the same resolution and serve the same paperwork to him, just in case. Kind of a cover our...
Yep. Where are we at on that first resolution? Have we hit the timeframe on it?
We have hit the timeframe. This will extend it.
Yep, that's what I was...
But we all, we want to do it the right way.
Yep, oh. I'd make a motion to approve the Resolution 2018-66.
Second that.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2018-67 approving gambling application for Garvin Fire Relief Association to be held at the caboose.
So we received this today, actually. We brought it to Diane, and they are asking for the ability to, I believe it's full tabs, tip board, and... To operate out of the caboose, and it is for the Garvin Fireman Relief Association.
I'd make a motion to approve 2018-67.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2018-68 approving payment to Reiner Construction for the work completed on plans, pay request number nine.
So they're looking for, this was just submitted today by Reiner to myself, Shane, the city engineer Chris Larson, and Jeff Van Buren from Rural Development. Everybody agreed on the amount, and there, there's no problem with it there, but they still have to do their due diligence. So they're asking for the council's approval for the pay amount of $683,959.36 on the condition that it's approved by the engineer and Rural Development, after they do their due diligence on it. They have verbally both committed to it now, but for a time-sensitive thing, since we had our meeting tonight, I guess I'm jumping the city ahead by one. You'd be jumping ahead of the engineer, but I would like you to approve it based on the engineer approving it.
And you said they verbally have said, looks good.
But they, they've got...
They've got to go with their way of doing it.
Yep. Yep.
So I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-68, along with the engineer's approval.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. David?
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar, including municipal accounts payable without breakthrough beverage, the municipal accounts receivable, approve the charter minutes from 9/27, and the planning commission minutes from 10/15.
First and second, any favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, would somebody like to do it with breakthrough beverage?
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar with breakthrough beverage.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any unfinished business, you guys? Any new business? Any mayor council communications? Anybody like to adjourn, Rosemary?
Move.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.